I'd like to welcome everybody to the Southbridge Town Council Meeting, Monday, August 7th, 2023, 7:00 PM, McKinnon Council Chambers. The agenda. Number one, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the free republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, roll call.
Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Shinier.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Montigny.
Present.
Counselor Ortiz.
Present.
Counselor Rivas.
Present.
We have a quorum. Moving on, agenda item number three, consider to accept the town council meeting minutes, Monday, July 24th, 2023. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Shinier, seconded by Counselor Montigny. Are there any discussions? I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, I don't have any minutes.
You do.
I don't have any minutes for the, uh, for three and four.
Then we are not voting on the minutes. I assume they were in the packet. Packet was a little short on a couple of things. Are there any, there are no minutes on the fourth, ten, or the fourth. We'll move right over to agenda item number five, Subcommittee Reports. Department of Public Works, Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. We had a meeting on the second of August where agenda items number thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen are tonight's agenda, and our next meeting is scheduled for August 16th, 6:00 PM in the Veterans Room. That's all I have. Thank you.
Moving on, Education Human Services, Counselor Rivas.
We have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday, August 9th, at 7:00 PM.
Moving on to C, General Government, Counselor Montigny.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a meeting on August 2nd last week. We have another one tentatively scheduled for the 14th. There's a couple of items on the agenda, um, tonight, but I just wanted to go through real quick. We did discuss the transfer policy, and we postponed it until after a potential financial management review that's on the agenda tonight. So if that goes through, it was postponed until after that. If it doesn't go through, I would imagine we'll take it up pretty quickly after. And we did discuss, uh, insurance overpayment and deficit. Um, we learned a few things. I encourage people to watch the meeting to try to figure out what we figured out, uh, but in the end, there was a deficit still remaining of about $91,000 after some reimbursements. Um, but everything else on the agenda, I'll speak to at the agenda item. Thank you.
Planning and Development, Counselor Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Uh, we have a meeting scheduled tentatively for August 16th, 2023. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Protections and Purposes and Property, Counselor Shinier.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we had a meeting on the 31st of July, and we have four items on tonight's agenda that are on.
What on then? And we have a meeting scheduled for this coming Wednesday, August 9th, to discuss police promotions. And that'll be at 6:00 PM. Chairman's Announcements? I have no announcements at this time. Moving on to Town Manager.
I have no announcement.
No announcements by the Town Manager? No presentations? Moving on to Agenda Item Number Nine, Citizens Forum. Are there any citizens that would like to speak to the council on any issues not on the agenda tonight? We have one citizen that would like to speak at this time.
Hi, Maureen Doyle, 771 Lebanon Hill. I'm glad you held this for me. Um, I want to encourage everyone to go to the Mobile Farmers Market at the Central Street Lot on Wednesdays from 10 to 2:00. It's from REC in Worcester, which stands for Regional Environmental Council. They have a nice variety of locally grown and seasonal fruits and vegetables, and we in Southbridge are fortunate to have this, in addition to area farmers markets in Southbridge, Strobridge, Westbrookfield, Charlton, among others, and local growers and producers like Arista Beef and Fay Mountain Farm. Local and seasonal foods are healthier for you since the transportation of them is limited, among other things. Um, the staff that I talked to at that Mobile Farmers Market several weeks ago mentioned doing a presentation at Town Council. I don't know if they have, but if they approach you, Mr. Chair, please be receptive to their presentation request. Um, support local agriculture, and this is a, a tree check month, um, from DCR. So check your trees and make sure that they aren't infested by pests, um, and if they are, it's a good time to nip it in the bud and save them. Thank you. Uh, have a good week.
Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council on any issue not on the agenda here tonight? If not, moving on to Joint Agenda Item Number 10, Vote to Ratify the Employment Agreement Between the Town of Southbridge and John D. Jovan as Town Manager effective August 28th, 2023, as specified in the agreement.
So moved.
Second. The motion by Montigny, Counselor Montigny, seconded by Counselor Shinier. Discussion? Is there no discussion? Roll call? Excuse me. Counselor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be voting no on this tonight. As I've said before, I didn't vote to appoint, uh, Mr. Jovan. I don't feel he, I think, I feel he lacks the experience and the education that was advertised for the position, and, uh, so I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Montigny.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that this year is going to be a great year moving forward, especially because we get to appoint somebody who has more stake in the game than any Town Manager in recent history in Jack Jovan. I think that is exactly what this town needs right now, and the one unknown that you have when you're up here as a counselor, you might be able to see who's counselor and who's not, but when it comes to opening for a job position for a Town Manager, you never know who's going to apply, and I sincerely, sincerely thank you, Mr. Jovan, for applying for this position. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Counselor Rivas.
Um, so I will also be voting no, um, and I just wanted to let the residents know and the voters know, um, based on the salary that was negotiated, um, I felt that, um, based on what we asked for in our, um, call for candidates, um, that I, I wanted us to start Mr. Jovan on our, on the lower end of that scale, and so that, that is my reason for voting no. Thank you.
Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Chair, through you. Uh, I'm gonna speak behind me tonight. I'm proud to see one of our local residents apply for a town, uh, office job, and, uh, we should be supporting that. It, it's funny, when we hire somebody from out of town, we give them all these benefits, all these, uh, bonuses and all these, uh, extra money just because out of here, we're gonna look at the good people, but, uh, we sit in local, beating each other's, but in supporting each other and make the town better. Uh, I'd be voting yes for, uh, Mr. Jovan tonight. Hopefully, we can, uh, change Southbridge altogether as a, as a Town Manager and, uh, Counselor and Resident, and we'll look for the future, for a better future for Southbridge. Thank you.
Any other councils? Have any other comments at this time? At this time, I'd like to relinquish the gavel to the Vice Chairman. I would like to just make a quick comment to the, the process, and, uh, I'd like to commend, um, the Search Committee, and a special thank you to, uh, Dave Adams for running the Search Committee. Um, he, he's involved in a lot of different stuff, but he did a good job on the search, and, um, we had qualified candidates coming forward, uh, moving forward, moving into a contract with a man that lives in Southbridge. It's an amazing concept. I worked for probably more Town Managers than anybody has that sits up here. I've worked with Boyer, Jacobs, Howley, appointed Chandler, uh, worked with, on the Building Committee, uh, with, with, with the Town Manager at that point. Over the years, you see different styles. You see different approach, approach by different people. They look through different lenses. I think what we're gonna have here, you can put a price tag on any human. I'm gonna pay him $180,000. He's gonna be a great manager. I think the guy that we're appointing is priceless. You can't put a price tag on this guy. This isn't a degree that you learn from a book. This is experience learned on the ground, in the boardroom, in the school boardroom, in the building committee room, in the council room. This is something that we've never seen in 49 years of his former government. And in closing, I've served with this gentleman. He is absolutely, his integrity is above the curve. So moving forward, back in the old days when I used to serve with McCann, Santelli, all the older guys, when we used to talk about the Town Manager, we used to haggle over the price tag, we used to haggle over the benefits, and then we used to have a unity vote to vote for this guy because we're all gonna work with him. I urge all the councilors, I respect your opinions. I wanna pull, pull an old card out of, out of Edgar McCann's book and just say, we disagreed on how to get here, but now we have to go to work, and I'm calling for my council to give a unity vote for the benefit of this community, even though we have some differences of opinion. Thank you. Is there any other discussion under this, uh, agenda item? If not, I'd ask for a roll call.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Shinier?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
No.
Counselor Montigny?
Yes.
Counselor Ortiz?
Yes.
Counselor Rivas?
No.
I'd like to congratulate Jack Jovan on the appointment of Town Manager. Mr. Town Manager, would you like to come up and say a few words?
Through you, um, thank you very much for the opportunity to serve or continue to serve the Town of Southbridge. Um, I've lived here the majority of my life, probably 55-plus years. Um, I love this community. It took a lot to think about applying for this job as Town Manager because I know the, the perception that some have that it's just the local guy. But I know if we work together and communication into the councilors that, that didn't want to ratify the contract, that's, that's okay, but all I ask is that you work with me because the only way we're gonna fix the multitude of issues that I'm stepping into, I, I, I could very much say and stay in my career in the insurance field and ride off into the sunset, but it was the love of this community. So coming forward, yes, there, there were a couple others that maybe had a little bit more management experience, but they didn't know Southbridge. I know what I'm walking into. I know the challenges that we're gonna face to make sure that we build the best team going forward. We all know what the openings are that we have in this town and the challenges, and I look forward, as I've said to others, it's gonna take communication and teamwork, and that's what we will do to make sure that we continue, um, the town and the right path. So thank you for the opportunity. I really do look forward to working with everyone and the townspeople, and again, I feel the pain of the townspeople because I've, I've lived it and I breathe it every day. So thank you very much for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna pass the contract back this way. We'll get the left side to, uh, sign it. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 11. Vote to appoint Charlie T. Blanchard as interim Town Manager from August 14th, 2023, to August 28th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just, uh, you don't have a contract in front of us. I know it's only a two-week period, but, and, and I know we can move on without a physical contract right here because we just signed off really quickly, but, uh, um, just talk about the pay real quick. Is it the same amount as before? Is it, um...
Right. The conditions don't change in the contract. In fact, we did sign a little agreement on this anticipating, you know, the vote. So everything's the same. Not just, just for two more weeks.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion by any of the councils?
Yeah, Chair.
Counselor Dow.
Should put another line and, uh, write Counselor under that, sign it. It's missing two parts.
Like I said, the front office has been a little weak, lean. Just put your signature, draw on it. Any further discussion? Counselor Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Um, I'd just like to say that Charlie has been excellent in, uh, during my term as, uh, Council Chair. Uh, when I had dealings with Charlie and, and what was going on in town, he was, uh, top-notch, absolutely superb, uh, great catcher of the town, and I'm pleased to be extending his contract for two more weeks.
Any further discussion? If not, I'd like a roll call on this.
Uh, Counselor Shinier?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yeah.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
No.
Counselor Montigny?
Yes.
Counselor Ortiz?
Yes.
Counselor Rivas?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 12, Vote to Approve the Town Manager's Appointment of Max Collexon to the Cable TV Advisory Board for two-year term, effective immediately through June 30th, 2025, pending completion of state ethics training.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second discussion. Counselor Montigny.
Yeah, this was, uh, approved at Subcommittee.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Real quick to Max, I appreciate you coming and volunteering again. It's amazing, all the work you've done for this community, and I just wanna thank you for coming back and, and volunteering for this position as well. Thank you.
Any further discussion by any of the councils? All those in favor? Opposed? In unanimous, all present. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 13, Vote to Approve the Town Manager's Promotion of John Jesky as Mechanic, effective immediately.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Shinier. Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Unanimous by all of those to, to bring him up here in a, uh, positive, um, manner. I just wanna thank John for, for, uh, applying for this position. As soon as one opened, you, you jumped right in. I, I really do appreciate it. I will say that the next two agenda items to the chair, a little off-topic, I just wanna make sure that everybody is aware that not everybody has resumes or whatever it may be, but they are qualified at the minimum when it comes to CDLs, uh, physicals and all that kind of stuff. They're already completed, and, um, I wanna thank, uh, our department, uh, department head on this one as well, and, uh, the Town Manager for, for getting these individuals up here fast so we can vote on them fast and get them to work. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? In unanimous, all present. Moving on to 14, Vote to Approve the Town Manager's Appointment of Michael Carter as Maintenance Man Equipment Operator, effective immediately, pending completion of the state ethics training.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Unanimous, all present. Unanimous, positive.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? In unanimous, all present. Moving on. Vote to Approve the Town Manager's Appointment of Matthew Trethaway, a Maintenance Man Equipment Operator, effective immediately, pending the completion of the state ethics training.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second discussion.
Same.
In unanimous? All those in favor? Opposed? In unanimous, all present. Moving on to 16, Vote to Appoint Kevin Splain to the Board of Health to fill the vacant term, effective immediately through June 30th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and second discussion.
This, this item, uh, wasn't brought to the EHS Subcommittee, um, and taken into account our charter and our rules and regulations where, uh, the appointments should be going through Subcommittee before they come to the full council, as all the other ones do.
I took it straight to the council because we have a vacancy. The gentleman's been waiting in the wings for the appointment. Um, we need a full Board of Health, and I wanna get this Board of Health issue behind us, fill the board. It's completed. This gentleman is well-qualified. He's served on many boards and commissions. He lives in Southbridge, a great, great asset to the town, so I moved it forward because I did not want to delay or do any more of the shenanigans that I've been seeing down at the Board of Health level. Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Chair, through you. I wanna thank you, Kevin Splain, for applying for that. It's been three weeks sitting in the Town Manager's office and never moved forward to any board or any committee or anything. I think, Chair, you did the right thing. Uh, enough is enough. Uh, thank you for bringing him up here straight. Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Rivas.
Um, this, uh, this application wasn't brought to my attention to put on an agenda. Um, and also, there was an item in the last agenda that conflicts because there was an item that was not recommended, um, for an application, again, um, at that meeting for the appointment of Nicole Duffy for that vacant seat, and according to our rules and regulations, uh, Rule 8A, any proposed agenda item except as provided for otherwise in these rules, either with or without a recommendation, shall be included in the agenda for the next following meeting of the Town Council, provided, however, that the Town Council Chair failed to include such item on the agenda because the agenda prepared by the Town Manager has been approved and closed by the Town Council Chairperson, the item shall appear on the agenda open for the next following meeting of the Town Council. So that item was never voted on by this full council, um, and this item, uh, wasn't voted on at all at the Subcommittee. Um, I know that there have been quite a few meetings where we've talked about items having to go through Subcommittee. Um, I know there, there is a vacancy, but we just voted on two other members. Um, the, the, the Health, Board of Health has been meeting, um, and if we're gonna follow procedure when it's convenient, I just don't, it doesn't make any sense to follow the rules sometimes and not other times. It's, it's confusing to residents. It's confusing to, um, people that are chairs of committees, and I just think if we're gonna follow the rules, we need to follow them consistently every time.
Counselor Shinier?
Yes, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, if, if I, uh, recall, the, the appointments that were done to the Board of Health, uh, one was for a reappointment and the other one was for an appointment. Uh, I think at that meeting, there was only two vacancies that was available because the vacancy wasn't brought forward to this, uh, council till after the 18th. Uh, and just as a matter of reference, the Board of Health did not meet the month of July because they failed to have a quorum, uh, during the month of July. So there is problems. I mean, we saw it here as we, as this thing evolved, uh, there was, it wasn't quite understanding on the agenda item for General Gov when there was the appointment and, uh, reappointment and then the appointment, uh, and it was explained because there was three openings. On that night, there was only two openings because the Town Clerk was not officially notified until the 18th. Thank you.
Any other councils that would like to speak at this time? Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I do agree with, uh, Counselor Rivas that, uh, we had plenty of time to get this up to an EHS Subcommittee Chair. I think those were some of the, the guidance that we have been provided to us starting after the reorganization, and, uh, you know, at the, at that point in time, shame on the Board of Health not getting enough quorum, uh, to get those individuals there. I do know that meeting was at the last minute, and we're off subject on that point, but the fact is, I mean, I'm gonna vote for Mr. Splain. Absolutely, I'm gonna vote for him, but the point is, if, if we're gonna set some type of policy up there or we're gonna set some type of trend, um, then, then we should do it, unless, unless, and I've seen it happen multiple times, it's one of these last-minute things, and you, you contact, the chair contacts the chair of the Subcommittee and says, hey, can you do me a favor? Can we throw this individual on tonight's Town Council meeting or next week's Town Council meeting? It just came up. Do you have a problem with that? Nine times out of 10, nobody ever questions that. My thing is, the, the contact should, should go to the chair of that Subcommittee. Communication should happen, um, and then, um, it, then it goes to the Town Council. But I'm making a motion to move this back to, uh, Subcommittee for, for a vote. Thank you, for a recommendation.
Is a motion on the floor to refer to Subcommittee?
Second.
Here's a second. Discussion? Counselor Montigny?
Thank you. Yeah, I think it's already proven that that Subcommittee, it doesn't make a proper agenda with that, uh, other item before, having the two appointment and reappointment for the same person on the agenda, and then we had to suspend the rules because people were left out of the agenda completely when they applied, and they're all supposed to be going on the agenda. That's why I've done the same at, at the General Government meetings in the past. So I do appreciate it being on the agenda here tonight for full council, and I will not be supporting or referring back to Subcommittee. Thank you.
Counsel, motion to refer?
I'm not, I have nothing to say about the motion to refer.
I, I'm not in favor of... Guys, I gotta tell you, we had a discussion on whether to bring things to the council or if it doesn't muster a Subcommittee, we, it dies in Subcommittee. It's up to you. I, I work for the Town Council. The majority of you people tell me, if you want things moved up, like the registry moved up with a negative vote, if that's the way you want Subcommittee to work, then Subcommittee has no teeth. Maybe we should eliminate Subcommittees. So moving forward, Mr. Splain has been sitting on the shelf, and I, as a chairman, don't let anything sit on the shelf that I know of. I wanna move these things along. I've talked to the people on the Board of Health, and the thing is, if the one that accuses the game plan is the game player. When someone wants to get their friend on the board, then they point the finger at us. So for me, I'm sitting here, listening to somebody tell me that the games are being played. Well, the games are all done. We're gonna vote on them tonight and/or refer it to Subcommittee if you feel strong about it, but I'm doing what's in the best interest of the town, not what's in best interest of a clique. That's all I'm gonna tell you about where, why it's the way it is. You wanna get it done, he's here. He's volunteered. There's no 10 people looking to come in the door for this position. Oh, don't get me wrong, this clique is looking for somebody to fill the slot, but the thing is, in the meantime, the Town of Southbridge suffers with the blight that doesn't get worked on, and, and this is where we have to start moving the agenda. When I took the chairmanship, blight went to the top of the list. I went down to the inspections Department and said, let's tour these buildings. We're paying, we're paying money to ensure buildings and lots that we should have put back on the rolls. Why? Because we have a difference in, in Subcommittee that they wanna do this and not that, where there's not enough members for a quorum. Well, I'm gonna fix that problem tonight. If you wanna fix the problem, you do not refer it to Subcommittee, and you confirm them, and then you go to work. Thursday, they will have a full Board of Health. Do whatever you have to do, Board of Health, it's your job, but to play a game about this appointment as, as one of the Chairman's Subcommittee saying doesn't hold water. That's all I'm gonna say. Any, anything else on the floor? Go ahead.
Just wanna make it clear that had I been advised that this application, I'm not a mind reader, so I don't know everything that, all the applications that are submitted, had I been made aware of it, it would have been on the agenda for the ninth, so, when our next meeting is.
Any other discussion on refer? All those in favor of referring back to Subcommittee? You requested a roll call by the Vice Chair?
Excuse me, Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Uh, I'm sorry. Uh, Counselor Dow?
No.
Counselor Lazo?
No.
Counselor Marquetti?
No.
Counselor Montigny?
No.
Counselor Ortiz?
No.
Counselor Rivas?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Shinier?
No.
Motion does not yet refer to Subcommittee. Back on the main motion. Is there any further discussion on the confirmation of Mr. Splain? If not, roll call.
Uh, sorry, um... Uh, sorry. Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Montigny?
Yes.
Counselor Ortiz?
Yes.
Counselor Rebus?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Chenier?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Got everyone right?
Eight yes, one no.
I'm sorry, who voted against?
Sorry, eight yes, one no.
Who opposed?
No, nobody.
No.
No.
I think it was unanimous.
Nine? Nine votes to confirm. We now have a full Board of Health that goes to work on Thursday. Thank you, councils. Moving on to...
Almost soon.
Agenda item number 17. Vote to approve Kathleen Avelis Alicia Tilton to the Community Services Director for the indefinite term effective immediately. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Is a motion and second?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Counselor Chinna?
I'd like to make a motion that we strike the word indefinite and add the word three years to it. So it would read, vote to appoint Kathleen Alicia Tilton as Community Service Director for a three-year term effective immediately.
Amendment on the floor? Any discussion on the amendment?
Second.
Yeah, I just want to hear what, three years? Does it require? I just didn't know.
I'm sorry, was there a second on the amendment?
Counselor Marquetti?
The appointment was, is a three-year appointment?
Is it?
Okay. And we're trying to do what some of these, you're going to see the treasurer come up, I mean, the accountant come up. And we're going to do that as a three-year. Because there's no indefinite. The problem was, the last time they appointed anybody in these positions was back when Mike Trombley had all three positions.
Right.
So putting them back into a line with being three-year terms will get things back on balance and also showing that the position has to be confirmed by council, as it has been in the past.
No, I thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, I agree with that. I have no problem with that. I'm just seeing if there's a requirement, if it's said and that it has to be three years.
If you look in the history of the town clerk...
No, I don't want to hear the history. I'd like to know, is that in fact?
Speaking? I'm sorry.
No, no, that's all. I just want to make sure there's a fact behind it. Thank you, yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion on the amendment? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present to add three-year. Main motion, any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 18. Vote to appoint Kathleen Alicia Tilton to the Council on Aging for the indefinite term immediately following, effective immediately, I'm sorry.
So moved. Second.
Is a motion and second?
Mr. Chair?
Counselor Chinna?
I'd like to make a motion to amend and strike the words indefinite and add the word three-year term. So it would read, vote to appoint Kathleen Alicia Tilton to the Council on Aging for a three-year term effective immediately.
We have a motion and second on the amendment? Discussion? No discussion, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present? Main motion, is there any discussion? Counselor?
I just had a quick question because there was really no paperwork with this in the packet, just sort of the difference and why there are two different items as the Community Service Director and Council on Aging. Does anyone want to, because I asked the Town Manager, I just wanted...
There was one person that held Veterans Agent, Council on Aging, and the Director of the facility and Elder Services. What's happened is we've, the Veterans Agent's been handling veteran and the workload has been heavy, heavier. And the Elderly Director and the Council on Aging, two positions are split. They're unable to hold both of them. I don't know if that answers the question. It's kind of bringing it back to what it was originally 20 some, 25, 30 years ago.
So is this a new iteration or like, so was Pat under the same structure?
The same structure.
Okay.
The thing is, it's, and nothing against Kathleen Alicia, she's outstanding. Everybody likes what she's doing. She's a, she's a real success story. But the thing is, we're trying to stray now, voting her in as a vote to show that you have to be voted by council, which we didn't do. So now we're just correcting this stuff and putting it in proper perspective as far as they're one in two positions. Counselor Chenier?
Yes, Mr. Chair. If councils remember back when, July, when we first became councils, you got a yellow sheet of paper from the town clerk. And on the back of that town clerk's sheet of paper, you're going to see the appointed positions that they follow. And it's the Director, Council on Aging. And that's this paper here. And you'll see where she was the Council on Aging. Back when Mike, Town Manager McCall was the Town Manager, he, part of his reorganization plan, I believe, brought in the title. And I believe that's how it's set up in the Schedule V. I might be wrong, but I don't have the Schedule V in front of me. But Counselor, I mean, Town Manager McCall, he did not bring the positions to council for approval. And as doing some research on this, Mike Trombley was the Veteran Agent, Community Service Director in the Council on Aging. And he was appointed separately to those three positions. Counselor, I mean, Town Manager McCall, I feel, failed to bring this forward as a issue for council to deal with. And he just appointed her and it didn't come to council. There's a few other positions that that's happened to in the structure that you will see. So thank you.
Counselor, Counselor, citizen gossip.
The microphone's off.
Mic on?
Steve 771 Lebanon Hill. I just wanted to point out something quickly that according to that, the way that agenda item is written, I think what you're trying to do is appoint her Council on Aging, the Director. That points her to a vacant seat on the Council on Aging, just to be clear. And she, she would be Council on Aging Director, but the way that agenda item is written, it doesn't do that.
Thank you.
So you need to amend it to Director.
Any further discussion?
I just... Counselor Adams? Thank you, Mr. Chair, real quick on Council on Aging. I just wanted, I was taking a look at the requirement for the three-year period and I don't see anything here, so. But maybe I'm wrong.
I'm not saying there's a requirement for it. I'm saying that it was that back in the day and we're just trying to bring you back where we don't have indefinite appointments so we can hold people accountable on performance and say, whoa, don't touch her, she's indefinite. She's doing a fantastic job. Every year should be renewed. I just think council needs an option of renewal. And I also think that council should be voting on these positions. So instead of setting, when somebody points back, well, we're all gone, it's that past precedent said, we don't have to vote on this. I think we are going to vote on it and we are going to put a, on the next item also, we're going to do a three-year term for the accountant. Any other discussion on number, the agenda item that we're working on, number 18?
Mr. Chairman, just one other thing if it'll help Counselor Adams out. Down in the Town Clerk's office, they have a whole list of job postings here that need to be appointed, as I call it, the big book that we all sign when we become, and the list is intensive. And you'll see that. And they corrected some of that during those times. The law, the positions, I'll use the Veterans Agent, for instance. The Veterans Agent spells out by Massachusetts General Law, I don't know the exact law number, but it says indefinite term on the Veteran Agents. The other ones are not, don't spell it out by law from what I understand. I could be wrong, but it's to try to get consistency within the appointments.
Go ahead, Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, look, I'm going to, I'm going to vote absolutely for Katie. No doubt about it. I'm saying, is there a requirement for the three-year term? That's all I'm asking. When it comes to the Veterans Agent, that's a completely different story between the Director and the Agent as a veteran. So that's two different laws and two different requirements for our, here. That's all I'm asking. Is there a need really for a three-year, especially Council on Agent when it's part of a voting board? And by the bylaw, the Director, the Elder Director controls, literally controls, the Council on Aging meetings. And the Council on Aging is an advisory board to them. So if she were to leave tomorrow, that Council on Agent goes with her. So that's all I'm saying. Is there really a need for a three-year term? No, I don't mean to take this long. I'm just telling you, I'm reading it fact for fact, and it is a requirement for the Town Council to confirm on the Council of Aging, absolutely.
Okay, any other discussion as amended? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present? Moving on to item number 15. Is vote to amend item nine from the Town Council meeting on February 27, 2023 to comply with MGL C4155. The original motion is vote to appropriate, excuse me, to approve the Town Manager's appointment of Christian Russell to the Town Accountant position effective immediately. The amendment, vote to approve the Town Manager's appointment of Christian Russell to the Town Accountant position for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2026. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Counselor Chenier. Discussion? Counselor Marquetti?
I just want to point out that basically this is a vote to amend a previously adopted motion. That's all. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present? Moving on to 20. Vote to accept $1,170 in donations to the Fire Department from Laurel Ridge Incorporated Solar Recreation League of Woodstock to the Fire Department to be used at the discretion of the Fire Chief.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second?
Mr. Chair, that was voted favorably in Subcommittee by five to nothing.
Any discussion by council? Not all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present? Moving on to agenda item number 21. Vote to move the location of the animal shelter from Evergreen Street, Cheltenham area, to Department of Public Works property on 183 Gulfwood Road.
So moved.
185, I'm sorry.
185.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ortiz. Discussion?
Mr. Chair? This was an intensive discussion during the Subcommittee meeting. And I'll just read a little bit of notes. Counselor Lazo, Chair Lazo spoke about the pros and cons of relocating the kennel to the DPW facility grounds. And Chief Watson explained the history of the project, expressed concerns related to the possible added costs and completion delays. Ultimately, what happened at the end was a motion made and it was voted in favor of five to nothing to relocate the dog kennel to the DPW facility.
Any recommendations done? Any other discussion?
Yes, real quick, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Adams?
No, it was a great discussion that was had and I have no problem with it. I was looking at amending this to, to ensure that, one thing that you had brought up during the meeting was that you were going to set up a building committee for this purposes. So I'd like to actually amend that motion to add to the end, instruction changed to form a building, or instructing the Chair to form a building committee. That's all I'm asking.
I am, yeah, that's...
We have an amendment on the floor?
Second.
A second by Dow. Discussion on the amendment? I'm fully in favor of it. I'm just waiting for Jack Dovian to get seated so we can get the Town Manager in it. Any other discussion on the amendment? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Moving on to the main motion as amended? Any discussion? If done, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present?
No.
Oh, excuse me. Sorry, don't...
That's ours.
Eight, one. Moving on to 22. Vote to require that repairs to 30 Cheltenham Street Sacred Heart Church be completed by October 1, 2023, adhering to the applicable codes and permitting process, the International Massachusetts Building Code, to the satisfaction of the Building Inspector and the Building Commissioner, pending payment of any outstanding taxes. Failure to comply will result in the town initiating the process to demolition of the building. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Counselor?
This was recommended to support this by five to nothing.
Counselor Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I move to amend this motion by striking out pending payment of any outstanding taxes and also striking out demolish the building and inserting make the structure safe.
Is an amendment on the floor? Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Discussion on the amendment?
Thank you. So then I will speak to my amendment. The problem that I have with the sentence pending payment of any outstanding taxes and now it's starting to, you're starting to confuse what this is about. Is it about the safety of the building or is it about him not paying his taxes? The other issue that I have is that we're going to take the whole building down. The owner of the building did present a structural engineer evaluation of the building, Birdie Consulting, and he did, in his opinion, and this building, a structural engineer, his livelihood is on the line here. And if, he says that the towers down about halfway, he didn't say anything about the rest of the building being unsafe. My concern is if we're going to take the building down because he hasn't paid his taxes, we could be running into a legal issue here. So that's why I wanted to make this amendment, to strike those two. Thank you.
Just a point of clarification, it's two things going on here. The taxes, if they're not paid, they can do a tax taking, which takes time. The demolition of the falling parts of the building or the whole building is upon the Commissioner, and we are liable if anybody gets hurt because we've already recognized it as a falling building. So just keep that in mind while we discuss this. Any, Counselor Chenier?
Yes, Mr. Chair, through you. During discussion of the 30 Cheltenham Street, known as Sacred Heart Church, the discussion from the Building Inspector talked about the, just as you said, that the part of the process to get a demolition permit, whether it's taking the towers down or taking the whole facility down, requires taxes to be paid. And in the past, they were waived under Town Manager McCall for him to secure the, secure the building. The Building Inspector and the Commissioner also was adamant to let us know that the inspection that was done was the visual inspection itself and that there was more supposed to be coming forward from the gentleman. And part of the discussion also brought up the fact that this, this particular person gets to the 11th hour and all of a sudden he comes back with a little bit of information, a little bit of work to satisfy our needs or our concerns. And the discussion was first to make the building safe, and by making it safe, follow the code. And by following the code to get the permit, you have to pay the taxes. So that's why it's in here. This gentleman owes a significant amount of money, thousands and thousands of dollars. He's owed since 2019. He has not made an attempt to pay back these taxes. He was here back in June 12, I believe, and he promised to keep the fence up. The fence is gone, left that, and it's still down as of today. The part of the agreement was to secure the building with boarding up the windows and doors. That hasn't been done. And at least attempt to make some kind of arrangements with his taxes, which he hasn't done any of that. So he hasn't done a thing. And the Building Commissioner that is acting for the town said that the building has gone beyond, that he wouldn't be a bit surprised if we have a severe winter, we could have a complete failure of the building. So that's why, that's why this is like that. Number one, it's time that he starts making arrangements to pay some taxes and follow through with his word. And if he can't do that, then I, then we need to take the necessary action to protect the interests of this community.
Any other discussion by any of the councils? Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Believe me, I think that something needs to be done there. I'm not disagreeing with you, but you're just mixing up two things here. Are you concerned about his taxes or are you concerned about the safety of the building? I think we should be concerned about the safety of the taxes, of the building. Take up the taxes at a separate motion, a separate time. And his own structural engineer has said that the building is not unsafe, it's just the towers, and that's what we should be concerned with. My concern is if we go to court over this and he brings an opinion from a structural engineer whose livelihood is on the line here, we could end up with a serious legal issue here. That's all my concern. I agree with you one hundred percent. Something needs to be done there. But this, you want to demolish somebody's building because they haven't paid their taxes? That's what this says to me, and I don't think you can do that. Thank you.
Councilor Shinia.
Through you to Councilor Mike Hedy. Well, it's just the law requires a permit to be issued that the taxes have to be paid up. That's all I'm saying. Make the building safe and pay your taxes, just as any other person would be here. If you want to waive the taxes, if you don't want to get that money from him, then you make a motion and say we allow the town manager to waive from it. That's all you can do. Thank you.
Just a point of clarification, the town manager can waive the taxes. Mr. McCall waived the taxes for the gentleman to secure the building. So it's two different issues here. The taxes were waived if the manager has the power to waive them. We're voting it so the town manager sees where the council's coming from.
Correct.
I think what's in discussion here is the integrity of the person telling you on what he's going to do. Councilor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. You know, treasure the time of the town. Town can always take him to court tomorrow on taxes, right? Go right to Dudley, file it. They can do, it takes just a long period of time, so I don't even know why we're waiting until October for this, but the town manager can go ahead and say thumbs up on get this tax title from him right away because he's already surpassed that period of time, and they can just go to Dudley Court tomorrow. It doesn't even matter on the date. So, I mean, I understand about the taxes. I think what, just clarification again, is keeping the town manager from waiving the taxes for the permit. Correct? Tell me if I'm wrong. Okay, thank you.
Councilor Rivas, before I go to the citizen?
Was the owner at the, I apologize, I wasn't at the subcommittee, but was the owner there? Did he?
No.
Okay. Has he indicated whether he can do any of this within that timeline? He hasn't indicated anything.
Councilor Shinia.
If you recall, at the last council meeting when this gentleman came forward was, I believe, in June twelfth, I'm not sure exactly. The building inspector said that he conformed to all the requests that wanted to be done. And the building inspector, he said till October first, if I recall correctly, that's how it came about, was that he was, council voted to give him till October first. The building inspector wanted it done immediately, but the council voted to give him till October first. And the building inspector has not seen any movement whatsoever since that last council meeting. The thing that has happened since is he has removed the fence and failed to secure that building.
Councilor Rivas, you all set?
Yes, thank you.
Citizen Lara Shell, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Roland Lara Shell, Briewood Avenue. I'm a member of the PPP Subcommittee, and I was part of authoring, the authoring of this motion. And I just want to make something perfectly clear. I was one that wanted the taxes as part of this motion. It's an enormous amount of money that's back owed to the town. This town needs every dollar. I was very upset when the past town manager waived the taxes. My bills are up to pay. I pay my bills. If I want to put a new roof on my house, I don't get a permit if I owe taxes. That should follow through, and I want it personally, this in the motion so that nobody has a chance and it takes, takes it off the town manager's back for any pressure of waiving taxes. Let's do it right. We've been talking about standards. That's what I'm looking for as a taxpayer, to keep the standards on an even keel. This has been going on for a long time. I was just blown away at the amount of money that this town could use to fix sidewalks and roads and other things that are sitting not in our coffers. So definitely, this was not put in as something to hold the gun at somebody's head. This was put in so nobody could take it out, and that's the way the rules are, so I wanted to make sure it was stayed in there.
Councilor Adams.
Just real quick, is Mike back there somewhere?
No, he isn't.
Okay, so I was watching the meeting again the other day. Did he mention that he had been in contact with this guy?
He told me, I'm sorry, through you to the chair.
Sorry, I don't mean to question, but.
I spoke with Mike prior to coming to the meeting tonight, and he told me he couldn't come tonight because he's had a family issue that arose. He did tell me that the gentleman contacted him today, said that he purchased fence and that he was going to plan on putting it up. And a week and a half ago at the subcommittee meeting, after the subcommittee meeting, he did said that, he spoke to this gentleman and that gentleman was supposed to be fencing up last week, and that still hasn't happened.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Councilor Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Going back to that warm summer day in June when it first started a couple of years ago, the owner of this property has done nothing unless he's been pushed, from beginning to end, unless he's been pushed and his feet held to the fire. I'm against this amendment because I believe we need to hold his feet to the fire. Personally, I think that building is in pretty rough shape. I think it's in worse shape than what some people are willing to say. There's been no movement, to my knowledge, and I stand to be corrected, there's been no movement, to my knowledge, by the owner to do anything to that structure other than let it sit there. So with all due respect, I'll be voting no against the amendment to this motion. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, one more, one more item. I just want to remind council that this council voted three times to instruct the building inspector to do something, on three different occasions. This body voted to do this. So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move the question.
Can't move the question on amendment.
Okay.
On the amendment. Any discussion? No further discussion on the amendment. All of them in favor? Opposed? One more time. All those in favor of the amendment? Opposed? Mr. Dow, where are you on this one? I didn't see you here the last time.
I voted yes on the amendment.
You voted yes.
You're in favor of the amendment?
Yes.
One more time. All of them in favor of the amendment? One, two, three. All of them opposed? Six. Amendment doesn't pass. Main motion. Any discussion on the main motion? All those in favor? Opposed? Two opposed. Seven. Okay, moving on to twenty-one. Vote to authorize the inspector of buildings to enter upon the premise of eighteen thirty Mill Street with the necessary equipment and assistance and cause such unsafe structure to be made safe or taken down without delay. And the property fence put up for the protection of the bypassers by or to be made safe pursuant to MGL one four three seven and authorize the town manager to sign any related documents.
So moved.
Motion by Ortiz. Second by Shinia. Discussion.
Mr. Chair, this was reported favorable out of a five to zero vote. I just want to remind councilors that the building inspector did advise us that this building is in bankruptcy and it limits the town's ability to really do anything other than probably only putting up a fence at this point in time because of bankruptcy. But this authorization is to allow him to do that.
Any further discussion? Councilor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Been dealing with this building since two thousand and eighteen. Obviously, before that, we also know about the history of it. All of our treasures, taking them to court, they come in with money. They come in with money, they pay a little bit of the taxes that they back, they owe, and then it gets washed again because of the court system. This building is a eyesore. It's a hazard. The fact is, we have a company, two businesses over there that have put millions of dollars into their building, not even talking about across the street in the way it looks. That Globe Village is starting to look presentable, except for that big old building that's sitting right there. So I tell you, the staff of this town has worked so hard, including Ms. Dean who did the brownfields, tried to get us in there. I mean, all the things we could possibly do, and we had buyers, and these individuals decided they didn't want it. I'm telling you, I'm in favor of this, make it safe. If we can get that property, take it, but I know it's going to cost a lot of money. And my only question would be to the town manager or to the chair, some of this money, I know the fencing is about four grand, whatever it may be, but if we start taking pieces apart, I mean, do we have estimates now or is this what the whole process would be for?
This is just to make the building safe.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And the gentleman, I think, is in bankruptcy, so it's a different procedure than what we tried to do on tax taking.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Moving on to agenda item number twenty-four. Vote to approve the request to use four hundred ninety dollars and sixty-two cents in FY two thousand twenty-four funds from account zero zero three, one three five, five eight nine zero 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 eight one two one spec appropriation ambulance billing to pay the remaining difference of the June FY two thousand twenty-three invoice balance not covered by the previous transfer.
So moved.
Motion in a second. Discussion.
Second.
Thank you. This was voted in favor. It needs a two-thirds vote because it was an old bill. I guess there was just a lot of ambulance calls in June compared to what they planned for. There's nothing really more to say than that. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, I'm sorry.
Two-thirds vote, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, two-thirds.
I'm sorry. That's okay.
All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Move on to twenty-five. Vote to ratify the lease agreement with the registry of motor vehicles and authorize town manager to sign any related documentation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinia. Second by Councilor Montigny. Councilor Montigny?
Thank you very much. This one had a little bit of discussion. It was sent to us, just so the public knows, the first contract that we're renewing here for three years used to be a two percent increase in the first year and then zero in the second and third, so we're looking originally at three percent and three percent for this two-year deal, which it seems like we couldn't get any more years out of it, unfortunately. And Subcommittee went back and forth quite a bit against a lot of people's recommendations, and we voted no unanimously with the recommendation to the town manager to renegotiate for either a longer term or better pay or both. And thank you very much to Mr. Blanchard because the next day he emailed us a revised contract which made the first year increase by twenty-three percent, so really raising the base pay by twenty percent, keeping it three-three. And just to give people some sort of perspective there, it's just over eleven thousand dollars in extra monies we're receiving now. Rather than charging twenty-two fifty-nine a month and then moving it to twenty-three twenty-seven, we are now going to twenty-seven eighty-one, twelve dollars a square foot. Like I said, it's eleven thousand dollars more for taxpayers over the next two years, and we're very excited and grateful for the town manager for negotiating that so quickly. And I would recommend personally that we now go through with it. It seems to fit the no recommendation.
You can't change the recommendation, Councilor.
No, it's my recommendation, not the general government's.
My.
Yeah.
Captain of the IT.
Exactly.
Okay, recommendation. Go ahead, Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Councilor Montigny. It was a better deal than the town manager negotiated. My only question is, we always put this in here, and I've always wondered why we put this in here. Authorize the town manager to sign any related documentation. So if this lease has not been signed yet, so we're authorizing him to sign a lease without us seeing it again, and I've always had concerns about that because in my lifetime, I've seen, I've agreed to contracts, and then the contract got changed after I agreed to it. So I've always been concerned about that, and I'm wondering why we do that. Thank you.
Any other discussion this time? If not, all of them in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Moving on to twenty-six. Vote to approve the town council rules and regulations as amended. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion second. Councilor Montigny?
Thank you. This was the only change, and it was recommended at Subcommittee. Thank you.
Any discussion? Councilor Adams?
Mr. Chair, just want to make sure that the public is aware that we're looking at changing Rule Number Four A, which basically takes it to June thirtieth instead of June thirty-first or until new members are appointed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Adams. I missed that. I should have read the whole article. Any further discussion?
I just, we're taking out or until new members are appointed?
Yep, correct.
Okay.
Councilor Rivas?
Just a question. I think we had asked about this before, so maybe to the town manager. What does, what effect does that have on the appointments and the meetings? Are the meetings gonna, during that timeframe, is it going to be hard for a Subcommittee to have a quorum when your, the appointment ends on June thirtieth, but new members may or may not be appointed right away? How?
Yes. Yes, in other words, the quorum is still going to be three because it's a five-person position, so that means all three of the council members would have to be there to have a quorum between July first and July thirty-first.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Moving on to twenty-seven. Vote to recommend that the council chair request a financial review from the Massachusetts Department of Revenue Division of the local service.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Discussion. I want you to know that that will be taken care of. I know we talked with Charlie, and they said the chairman of the council has to do it, so I will email that in. Any discussion? Councilor?
Thank you. Just to let you know, it was recommended at Subcommittee, and just the quick, it kind of goes over the financial flow of operations during the town workday, and it's separate from the regular audit that happens every year. And thank you.
Councilors, I think with the exchange of some finance people and the town manager coming on, I think it's a great idea. Good job, Councilor.
Same thing. Thank you, Charlie, for that finding that, too.
Thank you, Charlie. Any further discussions? If not, all of them in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Moving on to council forum. Councilor Rivas?
I don't have anything at this time. Thank you.
Council Dow?
Nothing at that time.
Council Shinia?
Nothing tonight.
Councilor Montigny?
Thank you. I just wanted a clarification, maybe from the town manager, on that item for the VHB one hundred seventy-nine thousand for the tip project. Is that corrected to a no vote? It's not moving forward as it was so properly voted on, no, at that last regularly scheduled meeting?
If I may, I mean, I haven't done anything to correct it. I think it stands that it's proven that it's four to four, so the motion failed.
Okay. Thank you very much. And the only other thing I have, I was asked by some of the people involved in starting the SHS senior send-off. It's Sunday from two to five P.M. at the Armory for the senior class members. I guess the community is invited as well. It's kind of like the senior class had a rough ending with their advisors, and they thrown together their own sort of get-together. So again, it's Sunday from two to five P.M. at the Armory for senior class members. Thank you.
Councilor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just reminding everybody, everybody today was Purple Heart Day. Posted on our social media page, almost two million individuals within the United States have received a Purple Heart, either through being wounded or being killed in action. So I want to remember many of my friends that have received it, not, they didn't win anything, they received it. Also, I just want to say thank you to the Recreation Department and Economic Department for the invite going to McCann and Capillo. It's amazing job what's happening up there in the most used park that we have in town. Who's socks game is this Friday? I think it's six, six-thirty, somewhere around there. You get to see the chair throw out the baseball. There's no pressure at all on him at all. And the veteran service officer of our town, Keith Roberts. So, man, I hope you, I hope it goes right to the mitt. And then RMG, I think on the 25th, is looking at doing a quinceañera for those individuals who, who never received one. And that's going on the 25th, so I appreciate the invite from the RMG community. And the, the chair is graciously appointed and councillor Shinya is accepted as the, the third member of the new ARPA Committee since former councillor Steve's has left us. So our next meeting is August 17th. The only thing I have to, for, for the town managers, the CMRPC and CMPO ballots that need to still be filled through by councillors, I didn't know if there was any updates on that whatsoever, or just a friendly reminder. And congratulations to the new town manager. And lastly, I want to thank the, the council for the moment of silence for my father and all the residents who sent me well wishes and my family well wishes and, and cards and all that. And I really do, my, my family, my mother really appreciate it, and I know my dad does too. Thank you.
Councillor Ortiz.
I have nothing tonight.
Councillor Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I'd also like to thank the Recreation Committee, the Recreation Director, for the invitation to the ribbon cutting down at McGant Field. It was a nice event. They've done a lot of good work there. There's a little more that needs to be done, which I believe is going to be done between now and October. But it's, it's a nice facility. It's, it's great for the kids, and I'm looking forward to seeing what Mr. Brunel has in store for us with the other parks in town that he's also in charge of and looking into. I'd also like to thank Chief Woodson for the invitation to the National Night Out last Tuesday. Wonderful event. It was great to see people there. It was well attended by citizens. We had the DPW there represented. We had fire department there represented, and of course, the police department. It was a great night, and I was pleased to be invited down there for that. So thank you very much.
Please, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd also like to thank Chief Woodson for the, putting on the Southbridge Police National Law Enforcement Night Out last week. It was an excellent event. Good to see families there, a lot of representations from civic organizations, games and rides for the kids. Southbridge Fire Department was there, DPW. Worcester County Sheriff was there, and I, I think that guy, he's got to be at least seven foot tall. I've never seen anybody that tall. I enjoyed the free food, especially from councillor Shinya's booth, and I thought the pepperoni pizza was the best. Like to know where he got that. It was excellent. And also, I would like to give my hats off to the police department. Had a pretty rough, difficult weekend. Riot stabbing, high-speed chase. Makes me appreciate the work our police department is doing to protect and serve Southbridge. So thank you, chief. Also, I'd like to just say that as far as that insurance overpayment and deficit of $90,000, I would just like a question, do we have a process or protocol in place for some, when someone quits or retires or is dismissed? That some way that this information is moved up to someone, some proper person in a position? And if not, I'd like to see something like that put in place so that this does not happen again. So thank you.[1763.24]